Call to order. The January 7, 2020 Lake Mills City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
But all who can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of December 3, 2019. Do I have a motion for those minutes?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion changes? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Moving to item number five correspondence. Do we, who would, does anyone have some correspondence they would like to share with the council?
I had a couple of phone calls for parking issues. One on Catlin Drive and one on Woodland Court. I took some time and came down and visited with Dan to go through these issues, and I will get back to the constituents accordingly. And then, one last thing, I did register for the APPA Legislative Rally in DC in February, and was accepted for that through WPPI, so I'll be attending that the 24th through the 26th.
Steve, could you just repeat which, repeat that last part for me?
What's the acronym for the rally?
It's the APPA Legislative Rally.
Thank you.
It's February 24th through the 26th.
There. It's still going to videos. Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'd just like to add that talking to some of my constituents, they were not real happy with the inconvenience they had as, you know, Ballberry Street was rebuilt, but they under, most of them understood it, but they were very happy with the results of the, the road as finished, so that was good to hear.
And they're awaiting the end of South Main Street. Looking forward to getting that done and free and clear, which will be a while yet. Okay. Anybody else have any other correspondence? Well, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the public hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment may do so at this time. Then, seeing no one at the podium, we will close public comment and go to number seven, the city manager's report.
I provided you with the utilities, check register, and the general fund check register, and the police department report. Some questions on the GF report. Good question. Kind of funny, in our perspective. We had a big bill from McDonald's, and someone wanted to know how we could spend $750 every We did, actually, we reimbursed them their escrow account for the site plan review. Reimbursement, not an expense. The archaeological report, Phase Two, is complete. It does not recommend going to Phase Three. You will receive it at-
That's good.
-on Thursday with your next agenda for the next council meeting. You'll get the full report. Very long, very technical, but still relatively good. Went to DNR, they are preparing to send it to the State Historical Preservation Office, SHIPOL. And hopefully, we'll have some information by the time we go to the council meeting. And maybe we have to make some decisions on what direction we're going to head. I think we're going to file for the grant anyways on the educational opportunities that we could put in there, so we'll start that process here shortly.
So that will be an agenda item at our next meeting?
It'll at least be an item in the city manager's report. I don't know if it'll be an agenda item for sure. The comprehensive outdoor recreation plan is set to be complete and headed to the Parks Board for their final approval to send to city council, and I believe Plan Commission. I think that has to be approved by Plan Commission, too, but Dustin will tell me that. Sam Barr will be on the next agenda, so we'll have that moving forward. We've been dealing with Christmas lights and how to handle that for next year. It's not quite as simple as we originally thought. Those poles are fiberglass and lightweight, and they don't have any way to attach Christmas tree lights to. So, we're thinking about switching out poles, so moving some of the ones on Main Street to the back parking lot back here, and taking the ones in the parking lot and putting them out on the-
Okay. That's a good idea.
It'll still be a different type of streetlight, but at least it'll hold it.
Never a dull moment.
The library parking lot is, is pretty much complete. We haven't got it all striped, but all the paving and concrete's done, so I don't know if you parked there yet or not. LSL, we're just in the final throes of our consent order. We've got all the inspections done, and the report submitted, and so now it's basically finalizing the 7% annual removals. So we'll stay on that, and probably determining what our actual 7% is.
Oh, I just, just going back a minute, I parked in the library parking lot, and I liked it. It's much more convenient and safe, I think.
The radium, I don't know if you remember, well, number four had a radium problem. We did the investigation, came up with a report that the DNR approved, and then we asked them if we could delay it until spring, and they have approved that, too. So that's all taken care of and ready to move forward. We've replaced 1,500 electric meters and 800 water sewer meters. We're doing some evaluations on where we need streetlights at this current time. I think one on Brewster for sure, maybe one at the north end of Birch, and one at the north end of Elm, and maybe a couple on American Way. So we'll see how that goes. Erosion control, our report has been submitted. We had some WPPI funds granted to us to put a yard light in the fire departments, out front of the fire departments, so now you can actually see where you're going. PSC's doing a billing, an electric billing audit on us this year. They usually do it about every five years, so we were up. We are having an Economic Development Commission meeting this month, so it'll be 6 o'clock on the 13th.
Will the agendas come out for that?
Yes. They won't be hung on, on the website, I don't think, but they will be mailed.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
I got two things, Steve. You talked about the radium, and you said about holding off to spring. That's, holding off the remediation plan starting, or what are we holding?
Yes.
Okay.
What we have to do is shut the well down and pull everything out, and then fill it, and then put everything back in. And they'd rather do that in the warm weather. So we anticipated that there might be some cold weather this year, and it hasn't quite come yet. We were hoping for warmer weather, so we asked to wait until the spring, and they were fine with that.
Okay. The last thing I wanted, was curious about, since the, the report is finished for the stuff out there at Sandy Beach, would it be possible to get the folks that did the actual study to maybe give a, like, a public presentation or something along that line? I mean, it doesn't have to be here at a meeting or anything, but maybe a presentation for folks that might be interested?
I don't think there'd be any problem. I'm sure they'd enjoy it. The, the question is, at what point do we want to do that? I'm thinking we want to wait until SHIPOL approves the report.
Sure.
And then they can come down and, and give a final result report. Not only what they did, but what actually, what it resulted in.
Sure.
So.
All right. That's all I had, Steve.
I do, I do have one other thing. We have modified the municipal clerk, court clerk's job description, and we have attached a, kind of a finance administrator bookkeeper to it, and we want to make it full-time with some additional wages, so. We've actually worked with the judge, got his approval, reviewed other job descriptions. He has signed off on the job description, so we're trying to head in that direction to get some additional help for Betsy in the bookkeeping area. That has been a problem now for, going on three years, and we, we just have to do something.
So are part of the duties going to be city-related as opposed to municipal court-related?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we, we had to sit down and write the job description in a form that made the judge comfortable, obviously. And there are certain bookkeeping responsibilities, or at least money handling responsibilities, that the municipal clerk has, and we don't want those to cross over into the, into the other bookkeeping, because that becomes an internal control problem. So we have to work through that, but we have plenty of things that we can work around and get that, so that we have plenty to do, but the, the judge gets the primary hours.
So the position is posted in the paper this week?
That is- Has been pulled.
Oh, it has been pulled?
Yeah. We've notified people that they will keep their applications on, but we're advertising again.
All right. So there we, a new one coming up.
Yeah, and we, and we've modified the ad quite a bit, too, to make them so that they know that it's different. We hope that, having a full-time position also, you know, people are more willing to apply for it and get-
And it has benefits with that?
Yes, now it has benefits, and technically, it had some level of benefits before, but now it'll be a full-time position.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number eight. Acceptance of minutes of the Public Works Board of July 9, 2019, the Public Works Board of August 13, 2019, Public Works Board of September 10, 2019, Public Works Board of October 8, 2019, Planning Commission of September 24, 2019, Parks Board of November 20, 2019, and Joint Rock Lake Committee of October 1, 2019. These minutes will be accepted and placed on file. All right. And with that, we will move on to council business. Would you please read the tavern operator licenses names?
Martin Bantel, Melinda Jansen, Grace Schoff, Jennifer Blenk, John Lamp, Joanne Jablonsky, and Kristen Hosey.
Okay. Some are new and some are renewals, but it doesn't matter, we don't have to take them separately.
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to issue those tavern operator licenses?
I move that we grant the tavern operators licenses to the names that were read.
Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to item B, the public hearing, adopting the Jefferson County National Hazards Mitigation Plan for 2019 and 2000, through 2023. So do I do a thing like that with the, do I have to do a thing?
You just, excuse me. You just called a hearing to order.
Okay. I'm going to call the public meeting, the public hearing to order. Anyone who wishes to speak may?
I'll give a little bit of a summary on what it is, so that-
Okay.
You have an idea if there's any. But there, there are groups of goals that were reviewed. I mean, every five years, they go through the haz, we approved the hazardous mitigation plan about six years ago, and we, I think we had one before that, and every so often, they go through and update it. They try and do it every five years, and then they renew goals. So if you go through the document that's been modified here, there are 14 pages, I believe, and they list goals that need to be done, and they provide some descriptions and things along that line, but they'll have an implementation action strategy, they'll have estimated costs, priorities, and then they'll have responsible entities. And we are one of, we are often one of the responsible entities, and that's why they're asking you to have a public hearing and then adopt this. Technically, we reviewed it and approved it last February, but they wanted us to hold a public hearing on it and have a resolution filed at the state, so that's why we're back.
So it's a little bit of housekeeping?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see the hordes moving in to comment on this, so, and I think we've done what we need to do for it, so. Seeing nobody, close public hearing and move on to item C, the resolution 20A, adopting the Jefferson County National, Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second.
This is resolution 20-1. All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. So as we move on. Moving to item D, resolution 20-2. Let's see once here. Would you, would you read that resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution 20-2, in appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills from William Hartwig. Whereas the city council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor William Hartwig for his years of loyal service to the City of Lake Mills and its citizens, and has served as Rock Lake Cemetery sexton of the city with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents and expertise for the past 24 years, and has devoted numerous hours providing positive contributions to the operations of Rock Lake Cemetery while exhibiting the loyalty and dedication to the city and enthusiasm for his profession. And William Hartwig's attention to detail, professionalism, and effectiveness have made a meaningful and lasting contribution to the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of William Hartwig and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move adoption of resolution 20-2, appreciation of public service for William Hartwig.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I believe we have staff members that would like to speak. Would you like to do that at this time?
Thank you, Diane. Rob Getz, Parks and Forestry Director for City of Lake Mills. Anybody that does not know Bill Hartwig, this is Bill Hartwig. In the last 24 years, if you ever had to purchase a plot or bury someone in Rock Lake Cemetery, Bill is the individual that you would have dealt with. I publicly would like to thank Bill for all he's done for myself throughout his tenure as Cemetery Sexton. Bill has been a great asset to the City of Lake Mills. He's been a great employee, he's been very dedicated. Bill has done an outstanding job throughout his 24 years of service here. He's maintained the cemetery records to the utmost accuracy. He took care in how those were taken care of. The new guy is walking into a great position up there, the way Bill left it. He handled all the aspects, the sales, the burials, ordinance enforcement, the headstone placements, with the utmost professionalism. This is one job, when I started here, Bill was already here for 22 years. I did not have to worry about if his job was being done right, because it definitely was. So personally, I would just like to thank Bill for everything he's done for me. I've really enjoyed working with him. I'm going to miss him. The City of Lake Mills would also like to thank Bill for the 24 years of service he gave as a Cemetery Sexton, and they'd like to off, give him a plaque. So Bill, if you want to come up?
Should we go to?
Do you want to say something? Thank you very much for the recognition. It's been a fun job, not all the time. I had to deal with some folks that were hurting, but we got through it. I had to adjust to that, too. There were so many other things that were, small things that were involved that you learned to take care of, the books especially, the records, to make sure that the next person that was coming through was going to be able to understand what was going on. I met some very nice people, even though they might have been under a little pressure from a loss in the family. I received a lot of thank you notes and letters, and it really made you feel good. I liked the job, but I've got second thoughts now, maybe I should have hung in there a couple more years. But my hearing is not the best, and that was one of the reasons that I decided maybe it's time for me to have somebody else come in. But I appreciate the recognition that you did with that plaque, and I'll, I'll put it up where a lot of people can see it.
Well-
Well, thank you very much.
It's well deserved. I just want to take this opportunity, because I sometimes run into people and say, why does the City of Lake of Mills own a cemetery? And Steve can correct me, or Dan, but my understanding is, is that when different churches in the area decide they don't want to continue their church cemetery, by state law, it reverts to the city? Am I correcting what I just stated?
It doesn't have to be a church. Any for-profit or nonprofit organization that runs a cemetery and then decides not that they, they can't afford to maintain it anymore, it automatically reverts to the municipality in which that cemetery is, and we thus become responsible for its maintenance.
Okay. So it isn't a case of where the city decided to own a cemetery, we became the owners of the cemetery plots over the years, and, and that's, you know, how, how it is. It isn't something that we actively went out to get. Is there anything I should add to that?
I know that when we wrote the memos, it was, why don't we sell it again? But generally, what happens is they bleed all the profits, the for-profits will bleed all the profits off, and it goes back to the city, and we get a broke cemetery again. So it's better just to manage it as we manage it, rather than putting it out for a bit again.
Okay. So, and we have been very, very fortunate to have the consistency we've had over all these years with Bill, and we are also fortunate that it passes on to someone very knowledgeable. So we're fortunate in that as well. Okay. We'll need a vote.
We need to vote. We didn't vote on it yet.
Oh, we have to vote. That's right. Thank you. All right. Would you call the roll?
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Appreciate you catching up. All right. So, moving on to item E, discussion and decision on the request from the Lake Mills Main Street Program to use the community center for the Knickerbocker Trivia Night fundraiser. Okay. Hang on, I got to get to. So. All right. Do I have a more, person who wants to make a motion for, oh, do you want to read the title?
City Council Motion 20-1-1-1, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Lake Mills Main Street Program.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move motion 20-1-1-1.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this? So yearly event, and it's held here in the building on Friday night of that weekend?
Friday, January 31st.
Yep. Thank you. So, okay. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Item F, discussion decision on approving the appointment of successor agent John Lamp, QuickTrip. We have a motion 2112. Does anyone wish to have it read, or?
Do you want me to read the title on this one? City Council Motion 20-1-1-2, approving the appointment of successor agent John Lamp, QuickTrip, Inc.
I move, move adoption of motion 20-1-1-2.
Second. And- And any discussion?
Just a replacement.
Yes. So, seeing no other discussion, let's call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to item G. Discussion decision on the appointment of the election inspectors. Would you read that motion, please?
City Council Motion 20-1-1-3, appointment of election inspectors. Did you want the entire motion on this one, or just the title and names?
Let's see.
Title and names?
Title and names, I think. I agree.
The names are all undesignated. Jill Durrin, Ann Hunt, Jen Christian, B. Rochattle, Peg Stores, Sandy Wall, Carrie Buckholz, Jill Nadler, Vicky Cromie, Becky Winters, Susan Conrad, Mary Ann Hauser, Jane Harburg, Amy Phillips, Susan Nessman, Michael Nessman, and Dana Ostrowski.
Okay. So, any motion to move?
I'll move adoption of motion 20-1-1-3.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Is there anyone do?
No. Everybody on that list has worked at least one election. Susan and Michael were not appointed at the council level. They came in as a replacement when we were short an election, and they did great. So I'd love to have them back as election inspectors. I did lose a few. I'm hoping that with this list, I have enough to get through. The presidential might be a little bit different story, but we've got some changes for this year with the new Badger books. So hopefully that'll make it a little bit easier with the amount of staff as well.
Has there been any great change for these people, as far as the rules go and all that? Training, stuff like that, since the last?
There's definitely be some new training for them, seeing that we're going to the Badger books and things change, and we do updated training before every election. The only real difference with some of these as well is that neither party submitted a list, so these are all my recommended appointments.
Have we ever got any recommendations?
Yeah, we used to get from both, and then the last term, which would have been 17 to 19, I suppose, we only had one party submit, and this year, nobody did. But they're all wonderful to work with, and I've asked them all to come back. They do a great job.
All right. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Item H. Discussion decision on the appointment of the special voting deputies.
To that item. City Council Motion 20-1-1-4, appointment of special voting deputies. And that is for Melissa Quest, Heather Crawford, Jill Durrin, and Jennifer Christian. We're the four that get appointed every time, that go and do the special voting at the care facilities. No change.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move adoption of motion 20-1-1-4.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of the... More of the same? Call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to thank all the people who work on the elections for their efforts.
Nope. Item I. Discussion and decision on awarding the 2020 grave opening enclosed contract, Meitner Land Services LLC. Let me get back to that item on my thing.
The title on that one is City Council Motion 20-1-1-5, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Meitner Land Services.
Okay, is there a motion to 20-1-1-5?
So move.
Second. Okay. Are there no major changes, right?
The cost went up a little bit on certain service areas. Rob's view on the matter is that's a cost of doing business increased relatively nominal. We did just renegotiate that contract for 2019, so this is the first annual renewal, and he's requesting a little bit of an uptick.
I think it's $10.
Yeah, I believe that's accurate.
Not a lot.
That sounds right there.
Yeah, his, yup. His request is...
535 from 525, and 280 from 270, so it's...
Okay. Seeing no other questions, call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Item J. Resolution 23, preliminary plat for Tyranina Point subdivision. Let's get to that item. Would you read that title for us?
Resolution 20-3, preliminary plat approval, Tyranina Point subdivision.
Do I have a motion?
I move adoption of Resolution 20-3, preliminary plat approval, Tyranina Point subdivision.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Is the parcel on the north end of the lake?
No.
No.
This is that Mud Lake Road on the south end of the city.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm assuming that's why Charlie's here.
Yeah, no, I remember when I was looking at the thing. When it said Tyranina, it made me think it was the stuff on the north end.
Yeah, no, this is, yeah, that was, that's already been a debate, the name.
Right. Mm-hmm. Okay. So, all right. So why don't you give us a little background on this?
It's been through the Plank Commission and the Public Works Board, and they've both recommended approval. It is a preliminary plat, so it's generally a conceptual layout. When they actually get into the hard details of constructing it, I think there are going to be some things that are going to change. In fact, I know that, seeing as we spent, what, three hours yesterday discussing the constructibility of certain features of the subdivision? So, but the preliminary plat will still generally give us the framework that we're working within. So we recommend approval, too, as far as that goes.
The engineer brought up a couple points and so on, and I assume those points will be taken care of, or...
Yes. Well, I can't guarantee that they're going to be taken care of in a very, in the absolute specific manner that the engineer recommended, because you have to look at constructibility. So, but the issues will be dealt with in a fashion that becomes consistent with what we're used to seeing. Yeah. You can't, you can't build a 4% grade on a 16% grade. San Francisco has got steeper streets. So we're more, we're more looking at certain issues like the water and the stormwater and the sanitary sewer, and then the street issues will... I think we've got them worked out. They meet the code requirements. So from that standpoint, I don't know that we can complain too much, but at least at their proposed level, the water will be, in my mind, the big issue. I think...
That low land area?
The high end. Houses that are two-story on the high end will have low water pressure. They were talking about putting in special pressure increasing units. That's not my... I wouldn't do that. So we're going to work to try and get around that. Probably the biggest issue that we're looking at here, too, is relocating the collector. Because I don't want to, I don't want to take... While it happens all the time, you know, you can drive through Colorado and see a lot of trucks running up and down grades. I would prefer not to see semis running up grades here. So I think we're going to shift it to the south some more.
Road?
The collector. The actual roads that were shown in the preliminary plat will remain the same.
Is that intersection on Mud Lake Road, are you going to change? Talking about coming in at a better angle?
You mean Mud Lake Road and Topley Street?
Correct.
Yes. But that's more of a... That really wouldn't be a part of construction of this project. That's part of our construction of Mud Lake Road. So yes, we are looking at pulling it in to a typical T-intersection.
Okay.
So you wouldn't see the two streets coming in at that anymore. It's unusual in that the transportation plan has Mud Lake Road actually turning and heading northeast and tying into 89 down around the Unce Barns. And then it has the County Highway 8 shifted south to this point along that property line there. But I don't think anybody spent a lot of time looking at the grades. And so, and because it's conceptual, moving in north or south is not a huge deal in the overall perspective, other than, you know, when it gets built. But from my standpoint, it would be significantly better to shift it to the south and get that grade down to 4% somewhere. And I don't think it changes the overall traffic flows in the area, or the concepts of tying into G and CPE and that. It's fine.
The map that's in our packet, is that the modified map, or the original map?
That's the preliminary.
You're talking about moving it southward?
No, this street will remain the same. It just won't be the collector. It will become a local. So while you're looking at the street layout, that's in this plat, nothing on the preliminary plat will change as far as the layout of the streets. It's going to be... This will remain essentially the same. You're not going to notice any real change in this. What we will talk about is the fact that when you look at the transportation plan, which encompasses a much larger area of the south end of the city. So right now, we're looking at a section right here, and this dash line right here would have been a collector, which is a street that's generally 39 to 41 feet back a curb to back a curb, and it's generally considered for higher traffic counts. What we're going to do is take this and shift it down further, so that we don't have to go over that ridge.
That's a good idea.
The street system will essentially still remain the same. Unce Haven will be here, and there will be a street here, but it won't be the collector. It'll be a local. So from the standpoint of looking at the plat, you're not going to notice any difference. And you can see here that the plan had Mud Lake Road coming up and turning and coming up like this. So, just a couple things that we're going to have to look at and rethink about as we modify these and how we tie some of these roads together. But I don't recommend running a collector over a... At the best, we're probably going to get somewhere around 10% grade. A 12% is, and what the actual hill is, a lot more than that. So from that standpoint, I just think we should move it south. And I don't think that's a big deal. At this point, it's easy to do. We just need to spend a little time thinking about, you know, where and how. But we'll do that, and as far as the plat goes, you're not even going to notice anything as far as the street layouts or anything like that. You might notice it in the cross-sections. The streets will be narrower. What is it? Tyranina Terrace was 34 and will remain, because that was a local, as were most of those. Unce Haven was 39 back a curb to back a curb, because it was a collector. It'll probably drop down. Might be 37 now. I think that's what we talked about.
Does this have to go back to Plank Commission for those changes?
No, those are simple changes. The plat's still the same.
How many lots do we have in here?
Forty, roughly.
Has there been any discussion about the stormwater runoff?
Yes. Yeah, we're working on that. It's all being worked on, the sanitary sewer, the water, streets, storm, you know, so it's all being looked at and considered how to run, and where it's going, those types of things.
Is there going to be a collector pond?
Well, it has a storm, yes. Everything's going to have a stormwater detention basin. Actually, if this one, the stormwater detention basin is located right here. Can't be located over here, because this is a wetland, and you can't put a detention basin in a wetland.
Do we have any questions for Charlie, who came tonight?
Corey's here, too. He's the developer. He might be more interested in talking than Charlie. Although I'm sure Charlie is always interested in talking.
Do either of you have something you'd like to say to the council?
If you have any direct questions, this is your question.
Okay. Thank you for coming, by the way.
Any questions?
Call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Good luck with your project. All righty. Resolution 24. Would you read that title, please?
Resolution 20-4, Arbor Day proclamation.
And Arbor Day is the last Friday in April?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
According to this? So... Do they do that, just so we don't have to do this every year? Or do we just do it every year because we do it every year?
We historically have not done it every year.
Okay, so, but if they do the last Friday in April, then it's good for a few years, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
I think that... I think that every year that we come up for membership renewal, we, we do this, so it's like every four years, if I remember correctly, because I, I don't remember doing this every year, but I do, I have done it a lot.
Well, and that's why I think they write it that way, so that it's good for more than one year. Do I have a motion for Resolution 20, oh, 20-4?
I move Resolution 20-4.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Let's go, does this, is this separate on its own, or is it related to our Tree City America?
It's related to our Tree City USA.
Okay.
So, we have to meet certain criteria in order to qualify for Tree City USA, and this is one of those items, is to do an Arbor Day proclamation. We have to plant so many trees, we have to invest so much money in tree maintenance, so we qualify for all the other ones, so if we do this, we make Tree City, we've made Tree City USA for twenty-six, twenty-seven years now.
Yup. Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, then we have a first reading, would you read Ordinance 1210, title, whatever we should read?
Ordinance 1210, amending City Code Chapter 279, Building Construction, Article 3, Electrical Code, Section 279-34, Adoption of Code Standards. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hereby amend Section 279-34, Adoption of Code Standards as follows. Section 1, Section 279-34 Sub B, Standards for Electrical Wiring, is amended to adopt Wisconsin Electrical, Electrical Code, Chapter SPS 316, Wisconsin Administrative Code, in its entirety, and to remove exceptions and additions currently within the existing city code as shown stricken below. Section 279-34 Sub B, Standards for Electric Wiring, Wisconsin Electrical Code, Chapter SPS 316, Wisconsin Administrative Code, is hereby adopted in its entirety, made a part of this article, and shall apply to all electrical services of the city. All electrical wiring hereafter installed in the city shall be installed so as to conform to the Wisconsin Electrical Code, Chapter SPS 316, Wisconsin Administrative Code. Section 2, adoption of this ordinance amendment has been sponsored by City Council Representative Steve Fields. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with, or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication.
Okay, so this is cleaning it up a little bit?
I don't know if I'd be that cavalier about it, it's us complying with the state requirements they give us.
I just thought it was kind of weird that normally they'll allow you to do exceptions that are more restrictive, and it just seems like in this case, they're taking that away from us, not allowing us to be more restrictive than what they, what they have set.
That's what they've done.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Supremacy clause stuff, this probably should have been done a while ago.
Interesting.
But my question is, why?
The, I guess the best answer to that is the letter that was provided by the Wisconsin, I can't remember the acronym, WSPS, it's... Safety and Professional Services, so for our inspector to be able to do certain inspections within the city limits, the SPS rule must be adopted in its entirety. That was partially done before, but there were certain exceptions and additions that were either added, or in some way, shape, or form included in our current ordinance, and the SPS is basically saying that cannot have those exceptions and additions in ordinance and comply with our requirements at the same time. It must be adopted in its entirety as it is written, or you simply can't engage in that service. The city isn't interested in providing that service, our city inspectors want to engage in that service, we have historically provided that service, so this is an attempt to comply with the state. That's a little bit of a simplification. Okay. I, I'm going to, I'm going to go this route. They want our building inspectors to either take all of it, or none of it. So if our guys have historically sent it to the state, allowed the state to do it, and done the inspections, and they came back and said, you can't do that anymore, you either got to allow us to do it, or you have to do it all, you have to issue the permits, do all the review, and to a certain extent, I think it was trying to cut down the amount of paperwork coming into them, if the city was doing the inspections, why don't they do the review? And then there was a lot of debate going on, and finally, their office came back and said, well, you can continue to do the inspections if you adopt our code in full, that way, when we review it, we have made all the appropriate decisions based on our code, and then you can do the inspections for us, but you don't get to add anything to it. So it was a little bit different, the initial impression was, is they didn't, they wanted us to take all the responsibility, then it ended up that that wasn't true, what they were trying to do is make it consistent across the board, or for them, so that when they did the paperwork review, they knew what they were reviewing, and they didn't have to look at the special exceptions in the Lake Mills Code, and then our guys could just go out and do the inspection, because they followed state code, and they were licensed state inspectors, so that's kind of how it fell out. We had the option, but Greg did not want to become the official reviewer of plans, if he could avoid it.
Does loosen, does this put us in? Well, that's not the way I want to put it. By, I take it the state code is a little bit more loose than our code, less restrictive?
Well, our code's kind of old, so at the time that we did ours, we were probably adopting a high-level code, I think that they've probably come up, but they probably allow things that we didn't allow, because there are changes in the products and technology that are out there. Is it better or worse? I don't, I can't qualify that. I, I'm not skilled enough to say that it's better or worse, what I can tell you is it's not the same.
But you don't see a great safety?
No.
Different?
No. I can, I can tell you, I've worked in places where they don't do any inspections, or plants and middles, and you'd be amazed at how much better it is around here than there, so.
So this is the first reading? Is there any rush on this?
There's some rush, but we have adequate time to comply with three readings.
Just do the regular three readings. Seeing no other concerns on the council? All right. Move this on to item number 10, recommendation for future agendas, you already mentioned there will be some ideas, some, some things on the next agenda. Anybody have something they want placed on the next agenda? We are, we have talked about the branding, when are we going to do that? We're looking into February, March, but...
Yeah, most likely we have talked about it, but I don't think we got anything back from, from the...
I don't think we requested to have anything back.
What do you, how do you see branding issue playing out, Steve?
Right now, I don't know, I...
No rush?
I wouldn't mind it being rushed, I just, I don't see any of us having the time to do it.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot going on, and, and trying to get everything put together and thought out is, is, that's kind of something that just hasn't risen to the top of our... Kind of hit that time period again, where things are happening, and we've got a lot of proposals on the table, and we're, a lot of reviewing that we're doing.
What's on the top of the pile right now?
Well, that Economic Development Commission meeting has, like, the TID amendments, so you've got TID number five, which would have two amendments to it, the boundary amendment and the original, and the base amendment, and then you have the gunlock property across the street, and those proposals coming through, and the potential for TID number eight on that one.
Oh yeah?
We have the workforce housing proposal that's being finalized, and so that'll start out at the Economic Development Commission, and that'll hit the council. We have the EMS county study being done, and we've had to put in a lot of data on that, in both the preliminary report and now the following report. We've been meeting a lot, we're going to be meeting a lot with the EMS, because we have signed that contract and moved to the medical director, and now we're trying to get protocols that meet with both, so that everybody knows what's going on, we're meeting with the county dispatchers. So we, we just, there's, besides the list that I have here, which, you know, I didn't give you everything on, there's, there's just a ton of stuff.
Fire department's going through a similar study also, aren't they? Shared resources?
They are, no, they are not yet, the debate is, is how, because most of the county has fire EMS, how can you not do both? So that, yes, that will be a conversation piece, the other conversation piece is, and as, as you know, we've been meeting, Watertown, and Jefferson, and Johnson Creek are looking at forming a, a joint fire department. So there have been those conversations of how that works, what the expectations are, the fire chiefs have actually been doing this one, and I was approached by the Mayor McFarland from Watertown, and she wants to meet with all of us to start going over, you know, where are we positioned on this conversation, and how we see it work, so.
When would the EMS study, do you have any idea when that would be finalized, or finished? Next year, year after?
No, I'm anticipating maybe May?
Yeah, they were talking later, mid, mid to late summer.
Okay. Well, nothing else on the agenda? Meeting is adjourned.